Oh shoot.
Did you hit the, uh?
Uh, how do I stop recording?
It'll continue on until, uh, we're finished.
Okay, whatever.
So, yeah, so it'll just be the beginnings here.
Are you letting people in? I thought I had to do that.
No, I'm not. I was just waiting for you. I had to make Berna- I made Bernadette a panelist and then I had to make you an organizer also.
Yeah, I remember you said that.
Yeah, so you could monitor the, um, people coming in if there's any questions.
Okay.
I did check the, um, our website, our work website, to make sure no one had submitted any questions, um, you know, to Office, and I did not see any, so, uh, we're good. And so far, I've only had like eight people that registered, nine now.
Okay.
So, not too many.
I have to go grab something off the printer because I left the script that you gave me on the printer at work, so.
Oh, okay.
If you don't mind, I'm gonna run downstairs for a second and go grab it off my printer.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I have to hide in my bedroom.
You have to hide in?
Yeah. Too much noise down there.
Yeah. Thanks. No, that's good. We do have one person in.
Barry, yeah.
Yeah. Do you remember how to?
How do I? I thought it would just go in attendees, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, nobody's showing up.
Uh-uh. Can you see the, uh, agenda?
I can.
Okay, good. I wanted to put that up and I wasn't sure, because I was still having trouble logging in, um, to remotely to my work laptop, my work computer. And, uh, so finally, after about five tries, it got me in, but I don't know if it'll continue or if it'll boot me out like it did the other day.
It is only 6:45.
Yeah.
I got on early to make sure my audio, video works.
Yeah, and you know what we should probably do is, uh, where's my attendees? Uh, for the attendees as they come in, um, have them, remind them to check their audio.
Okay.
You know, just, you know, in case they want to ask questions.
Okay.
And Michelle, um, if you notice on the, um, uh, what do you call it? The viewer shows, you know, all the, uh, sharing in the webcam and audio and the dashboard.
Mm-hmm.
All that. You'll notice as you go down, you'll see attendees, polls, and then there's also questions. And that's where.
I noticed that last time.
That's where they, uh, should be putting their questions in. Is that where Brian had put his in, or did he do the chat? Last time?
No, I, so when the meeting starts, I'll be turning my camera off, because what I do is I turn everybody's cameras off. And then on my screen, I minimize the chat, which is where they ask the questions.
Okay.
I maximize the questions and then I have the chat going.
Okay.
So I have two windows open at the same time that I have them monitored.
Okay. You can also use that question instead of the chat, um, for audience questions. They, they should be able to go in into that question section. And, um, you know, to ask the question and have their name with it.
Yep. Because then, uh, as I answer them, it'll like check them off for me.
Yeah, okay.
It was really easy.
Yeah.
The only time I get a little, I was a little overwhelmed was.
Well, yeah, that was a lot.
Just those questions. Trying to keep them in order, I guess, was the big thing.
I'm trying to figure out if, I don't think they're kept anywhere. Like, like I have the recording of the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't think that we can keep like a copy somehow of the questions.
Oh, there's no way?
Yeah, I haven't found it yet.
How do we get those questions in the minutes, then?
Well, since there were so many of the, the last ones, they're not all in there, okay? Just that there was, you know, 23 questions. And that would have been so extreme to have to type out every single one of those questions with the answers. Um, it's on the, you know, it's, of course, it's on the video. Or, you know, the, you know, you reading it or the, uh, audio.
Right.
But that was, that was way too extr- that was way out there.
Please remember to check your audio on your device to enable you, enable you to speak and ask questions.
Mm-hmm.
You may, whoops, also send your questions to me via chat or the whoops, questions area on your dashboard. Right?
Yeah.
Now I'm gonna copy this and send, so I don't have to keep re-typing it. And send it to everybody as they come in.
They come into the, okay, Sarah is here.
Yeah, and I just said, I, now I know. Here me is, but, um, but anyway, you were, I was still on mute. It didn't say it, but when I hit my microphone, it unmuted me.
Yeah, good.
So, so Bernadette, what are you going to save us from ourselves about today?
Uh, actually, Sarah, I, I can't see you. Are you?
I damned if I know. Hold on.
Yes, you, oh, you need to.
I did. I accessed my, I just, I'm gonna say all webcams. Share my webcam. There I am. Frizzy hair day.
Oh, there you are. I just wanted to make sure I was able, I was doing everything right.
It was me. I have to remember.
I think this should be a pretty straightforward meeting. The reworks usually are, and your regular meeting's pretty short.
Well, you haven't met our residents yet, huh?
No.
Hey Kathy.
Yeah.
What does it mean under Barry where it says not attentive? I noticed that at the last meeting. What does that mean?
He's not attentive?
See that? Do you see a question?
I see that, yeah.
Like that the last meeting too.
He, well, his audio is off.
I did send a reminder.
You know, he doesn't have any, uh, camera showing either, so he's okay, he's there, but he has no audio or.
Is that what I was like before? I let my camera on and unmuted myself.
No, yours doesn't show that, Sarah.
Yeah, I'm, uh.
Not attentive.
You know how that, Brian wants to be a panelist.
I can't, now Sarah, now I can't see Sarah. I can't see you.
I'm here. What did you?
I can hear you.
I can still see Sarah.
Yeah, it's, is to stop my webcam, so I don't think that's it. So.
Kathy, on the top, make sure it says view everyone or view who's talking, however you want to do it.
Oh, wait. View, 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 view. Where is that at?
It's on the top gray bar, not on that, not on the dashboard.
Audience view, okay.
Oh.
Audience view, is that it?
Uh, no, there's four things. So there's along the top of your screen, it should say uh, everyone with a dropdown menu. It could also say view who's talking, view presenter or hide webcam. Then next to that, it has webcams with another dropdown menu, then it has Zoom, and then it has screenshot. Do you have that?
No.
Me neither.
That's what I, yeah, I do not have that at all. Um.
Well, let's look under webcam.
Webcam.
Oh, you go under the dashboard, under webcam, and dropdown, dropdown menu of webcams, you can go to your preferences from there.
Oh. Okay, got it.
There you go.
Now everybody's there.
Everybody being four of us?
Yes.
Okay, just checking since, how many I see.
Yes.
I'm still here. I just turned my camera off.
I do have. I was gonna turn me off too.
Got my switch. I, sorry.
I hate looking at myself.
Me too.
It distracts me.
I don't think I should. I would like to not be on camera. I have a longstanding policy of not being on camera, so this is very.
I think this, I think really only Mike Schneider really should be on ca- whatever supervisor.
Um.
Am I on?
Yeah, you're on.
Why is that little box there of my picture? How do I turn that thing on?
What little box? Must say you're.
Oh, there you go. Never mind, I figured out.
Got it.
You meant you're about to be re-elected chairman.
No, I'm not.
Yes, you are.
That ain't happening tonight. I'm not getting screwed again.
I thought you, Mike, I think you've done a really good job at handling these meetings. I'm.
It's time for somebody else.
It's your swan song. Just enjoy it.
No.
So you think it's gonna be Bernie then? Cause I'm gonna nominate you.
Well, let's, let's see what happens.
Okay. Okay, if it's any other outcome, I will suspect a conspiracy. Kathy, I will come in in the morning to, oh, Kathy and Michelle, I'll sign resolutions and checks in the morning.
We're not doing checks today.
We're not doing checks, yeah.
Because I couldn't get to it. I had way too many other things to do with the, today with payroll. And it's the first payroll of the year. So I had, I'm still not even finished. I had a lot on my plate, so.
Okay, well, we shouldn't pay so many people so much money then. How do we simplify this for you?
Oh, it's, it's not that. It's different, different contracts and, uh, you gotta put.
It's actually quite easy to simplify it.
Yeah, you can't, because it's gotta be, you have to manually do the polls and you have to manually.
Is that you're suggesting no raises? We don't have, it simplifies it.
No, that doesn't simplify.
Simplify, you have to get government out of all the things it's in, then you have less.
Okay, yeah, I could probably have guessed that, huh?
Yes, you could have.
Well, you know, having been a government contractor for about 35 years, um, you know, I liked them, I paid my bills.
I bet I did.
Not, not horribly. I didn't get any of those $450 hammers or anything. I was selling services, not products. The products got them looked up. So I have my motions printed out here.
Yeah, I did too. Um, now, I don't, I, we only get to see the people that are presenters. Is that correct, how this is gonna work?
You, you don't see the attendees. You, you only, you only see the panelists, Mike, um, which are the supervisors and Bernadette and, um, that's basically it, and John.
Okay. It's just a little weird having a meeting, not being able to see everybody.
Yeah, now that the attendees can see everyone, they can see all the panelists.
They can see here and they can ask their questions.
Yeah.
Oh, they can see us, but we can't see them. Is that what you're saying?
Right, yes.
This is an odd question. Can you see who the attendees are?
Yes, we can.
No, I can't. Can I?
Um, I don't think you can, Mike.
Okay.
Nope, I don't think so either.
Um, like Michelle and I can see them since we, we're the quote organizers and controlling it.
Now, what, whatever happened to like GoToMeeting or the other ones that we were using?
GoToMeeting, um, the GoToMeeting we still use, and that one I've been using for, um, like the committee meetings.
Those are, I mean, can you see, can the board see people on GoTo?
And yes, and the GoToMeeting is almost, it would just be like the, the Zoom meeting.
So why are we using this instead of the GoTo then?
Uh, because there are more, um, attendees that come in. Usually for the GoToMeeting, we have like one or two, three maybe, um, attendees who really don't even comment, but, um, all the attendees that come into the board meeting, it's easy.
What's the limit on the GoTo meeting?
The limit, uh, for a GoTo meeting, I'm not sure. Um, it's the Go, the webinars have huge limits, like we have 400, but they've got them up to a couple thousand.
Well, we definitely got feedback from Brian that he doesn't go to webinar.
I don't like it either, actually. I like the Zoom personally.
The Zoom?
Where I could see people speaking and, I don't know, it's just like, it's more like being in an actual public meeting.
Yeah.
I kind of feel blind here.
Zoom also has a webinar feature.
Well, we, the difference is, Mike, that one is a meeting platform, one is a webinar platform. Both Zoom and GoTo have them.
Yes.
The, the difference is, and the reason why we switched to this for the Board of Supervisors meeting is simply for security reasons and also
Yeah, right.
for more control.
I understand that. I just wish you could show the other people on it though, or I could see who's on it.
Is there anybody?
Well, we could make him a. We would have, I think for him, for the supervisors to see who's in it.
Right.
Kathy, wouldn't we have to make them like a co-host or something?
They'd have to be a panelist. Like what, where you got, where the Board is, as the Board of Supervisors, you're the panelists and, um.
For them to see.
Yeah, they would have to be panelists to be able to, um.
Well, we are.
Okay.
I'm saying to avoid that, we can make the supervisors, or can you have more than, can you have like five super, uh, five, um, panel, I mean organizers?
You can have as many as you want, but then they won't be panelists.
It is 7:02. Is there anybody else in the meeting?
Oh, geez, okay, um.
Is Bernie on?
Bernie is here.
Oh, yeah?
And John's here.
Okay, there you are. All right.
Mike, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Very good.
That was that thing. Oh, that is. Okay, well, I'd like to call this meeting to order.
Well, let's find out if we've got anybody here, because we had made a plan to bail out to an alternate tool if this one didn't work, but.
We have, we have eight attendees here.
Okay.
Okay.
We have James Bergy, Jamie, Jamie McVicker, Kathy McDevitt, Sean Murphy, Wilson Moyer, uh, Greta, Borden.
Borden.
Greta, ready. Okay.
And Barry, the liberal.
Who was the, who was the next to last one?
Uh, Dorothy Lynn.
Oh, good. Um, could Kathy or Michelle screen capture that list before the meeting's over?
I don't know if I can, because it's not letting me.
Okay.
Hang on one minute. Maybe I can.
Yeah, we'll start the meeting and you can figure it out if you can.
And I have, I have another question. Is this being recorded or are all of these meetings being recorded?
Yes, they are.
Okay. Okay, so I called the meeting to order and our first item is to elect a temporary chairperson. Yes, that is Bernadette. What's that?
Temporary chairperson. This is, I think we're nominating Bernadette Kearney.
Right, yeah.
As her temporary chairperson.
And I think she, she's the chairperson now, so she takes over.
Right.
Can you hear her?
Yes, it was just a little confusing there for a minute. So, um, you've elected me the temporary chairperson and I'm gonna.
Wait, wait, wait. Do we have a second and a vote on that? Or we don't, we don't need one, do we?
Oh, we just.
We'll go ahead and do one.
Okay.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Um, and then the next thing on the agenda is the election of the temporary secretary until permanent appointment.
And that would be you again?
May I have a motion?
A motion.
To elect Bernadette Kearney, uh, as the temporary secretary.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thank you. And then the next item on the agenda is the election of the chairperson. May I have a motion?
I, I have a motion to, uh, elect Bernie Kurs as chairperson. And, Michael, keep going. And I would like to elect, uh, Sarah as vice chair.
And you know, Bernie, before you got here, I'm not gonna second that, because I have a similar conflicting motion. What do we do? Because I make a motion, Mike is chair and Bernie is co.
Okay, so first we have to deal with Mike's motion. So if we don't get a second on Mike's motion, then that motion dies and then we could call for another motion. Do I have a second on Mike's motion?
Come on, guys, come on.
Being done.
Oh, that's wrong.
We could, and we could do it separately if you want. We could just do the chair and then the vice chair.
It doesn't seem like it's gonna change anything for me.
Okay, then I could call for that motion die for lack of a second. I could call for another motion.
Okay, I make the motion as, for Mike Schneider as chair and Bernie as vice chair, Bernie Kurs.
Okay, we have a, a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye. Nay.
Bernie, before you got here, I told Mike he'd been doing a great job as chair and I thought he might do it one more year.
Oh, geez.
Thank you.
Well, congratulations, Mike. I, I will turn over the meeting to you, Mr. Schneider.
I, I think congratulations is wrong, but go ahead. All right. We'll move on. And our next motion is for the appointments.
And I can start reading them if you'd like.
Go ahead.
I, um, this, an appointment, reappointment of Kathy Schillen as township secretary, reappointment is Michelle Hugrill, yes, as township treasurer, sorry, Michelle.
That's okay.
Of John Granger as township manager. Zoning hearing board solicitor Patrick McKenna of Godfrey Greenwood, township solicitor Hamburg, Ruben, Mule and Maxwell Lupin, zoning officer LTL Consultants Limited, building code officer LTL Consultants Limited, building inspector LTL Consultants Limited, home office assistant Jason Baron, police secretary Booth McVeigh, payroll clerk Evolution Inc., tax collectors Berkheimer Associates and Keystone Collection Group, tax hearing officers Berkheim, is that right? Berkheimer Associates and Keystone Collections, engineer LTL Consultants, traffic engineer Carola Associates, public works manager Roadmaster Mike Hoga, animal control Glenn Deary, police chief Mike Chwininger, emergency management director James Gooding, emergency management board liaison Mike Schneider, depositories S&amp;T Bank, Pliget and US Bank, voting delegate to the state convention Mike Schneider, EPA and external auditor Barbara Kane Thornton and company, vacancy board chairman John Reader, open records officer Kathy Schillen. I've got a little more, I'm gonna do federal Northern Federation representative John Granger manager Sarah Schip, supervisor rep and George Martin Planning Commission representative. Regional planning committee, uh, board member Sarah, Mike Schneider alternate manager John Granger and TBD, the TBD will be selected by the Planning Commission. Agricultural Security Board of Board appointments, um, one-year term to expire at the end of this year. Ken Miller, Tom Ozenowski, Willer, Amin, Ray Nestrick and board liaison Bernie Kurs.
Okay, any comments? Well, I guess we don't need comments for this.
I think that was that one motion, so I made that motion.
Bernadette, do we have to ask the audience for any comments on this? I mean, all motions, right?
Yeah, and I didn't know if you did that normally in the beginning of all your hearings, or you just do it as you go through the motions?
We do it every motion.
Okay.
Any questions out there? Kathy? No? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, next we have, uh, motion to adopt resolution 5-2021, reducing the size of the sustainability. Okay, next we have a motion to adopt resolution five dash 2021, reducing the size of the sustainability committee from nine to seven.
You want me to keep going, Bernie?
All right, keep going.
I'll let you do the resolution for the, um, motion to adopt resolution five dash 2021, reducing the size of the sustainability committee from nine to seven members. I make that.
Any comments? Kathy?
Um, no.
Okay, each one, each one of these we read off. After the second, I'm gonna ask if there's any comments.
Right.
Okay, just so you know.
Whoever did the screen share of the agenda, could you scroll it up to keep, keep in pace with us?
Okay.
I make a motion to adopt.
Wait, wait, we have to, we have to answer, we have to vote on that one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Now I'm gonna do number seven. That, I make a motion to adopt the 2021 committee and board appointments as follows. Appointment of Chelsea Valet and Jesse Miller to the planning commission for four, for four-year terms to expire 12/31/2024. Appointment of Wayne Piskowski and Donna Delaney to the environmental advisory council for a three-year term to expire 12/31/23. Appointment of Jim Bergy to the open space review board for a five-year term to expire on 12/31/25. Appointment of Larry Stone to the zoning hearing board for a five-year term to expire on 12/31/25. Appointment of TJ Antic to the zoning hearing board as alternate for a three-year term to expire, or 12/31/23. Uh, reappointment of Jen Hilla Gas to the Parks and Rec Commission for a five-year term to expire 12/31/25. Appointment of Ken Allen and Mike Bender to Park and Rec Commission for a five-year term to expire on 12/31/25. Appointment of Wilson Moyer to fill an unexpired three-year term on the Parks and Rec Commission to 12/31/23. Appointment of Beth Miller to, uh, fill a remaining four-year term on Parks and Rec Commission to 12/31/24. Appointment of Ken Miller and Sean Murphy to the sustainability committee, both to a three-year term to expire 12/31/23. Reappointment of Kate Farnham to the historical commission to a five-year term to expire on 12/31/25. Appointment of our brand new human relations commission, which will normally be a five-year term, but since it's new, it will be Julie Foster to a term expiring 12/31/21, Brad Dyer, term expiring 12/31/22, Bernie Kurs, term expiring 12/31/23, Geetha Reddy, term expires 12/31/24, and Louise Antero, term expires 12/31/25. And my paper says Bernie's the liaison, but we also appointed him to the committee, so, okay, I make that motion.
Any, any questions, Kathy?
I don't see any. No.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye. You wanna do the meetings, Bernie?
All right, you're on a roll.
Okay, 'cause you're vice chair. I'll do this part. On the 2021 meeting date schedule, I make a motion to adopt and approve the 2021 regular township meeting schedule as follows. I should pour myself a drink. Um, Board of Supervisors, workshop meetings will be held on the first Monday of the month at 7:00 PM as needed. Regular business meetings will be held on the third Monday of the month at 7:00 PM, with the exception of January, which will have two meetings, if such meeting falls on a holiday, which, um, the meeting shall be held on the following day. Okay, there, do you want me to read off the dates?
Might as well for the.
I don't think you have to, do you, Bernadette?
Um, if we show them, and I think, um, yeah, the, the third, the regular, the third Monday, yeah, I think that covers it.
Okay. Our list also shows which are the holidays that cause a Tuesday meeting and that today is the reorganization meeting. The dates for the specific account of committees, advisory groups, uh, the environmental advisory council, the first Thursday at 7:00 PM. Please note, all of these meetings are now at 7:00 PM. Open space advisory board, fourth Tuesday at 7:00 PM, Parks and Rec, first Wednesday at 7:00 PM, planning commission, third Thursday at 7:00 PM, with a workshop available on the second Thursday of the month at 7:00. Sustainability, third Wednesday at 7:00 PM, with the workshop possible on the second Wednesday of the month. The historical commission, second Tuesday of the month at 7:00 PM, and the human resources commission, the fourth Monday of the month at 7:00 PM as needed. I made that motion.
I'll second a motion.
Any comments or questions, Kathy?
Nope.
Seeing none. All the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Bernie, your turn.
Uh, motion to approve that amount of the treasurer's bond and the amount of $2 million. I make that motion?
I second it.
Any comments or questions?
I don't see any hands up. No questions, no comments, nothing.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, next, I make the motion to adopt resolution one dash two zero two one, establishing the emergency service providers for West Vinson Township.
Did you second it? Sarah?
I second that motion.
Okay, I didn't hear it. Um, any questions, comments?
I don't see any.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Uh, can somebody move up the, uh, screen?
Yeah.
Follow. I mean, does everybody see that? I mean, do all the attendees see that before? Okay. Next one?
The motion to adopt resolution two dash two zero two one, establishing the township manager's compensation at 145,000 hours per annum.
I second that motion.
Any comments or questions?
I see.
What's that?
No.
Okay, all those in favor?
All.
Did everybody answer? Aye?
Aye.
Okay.
Next, rate of mileage. I make the motion to adopt resolution three dash two zero two one in the form of presented establishing the mileage reimbursement at 56 cents per mile following the federal guidelines for 2021.
I second that motion.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor? Aye.
Next, I make the motion to approve resolution four dash two zero two one, in the form presented appointing Barbara Kane Thornton and company at two zero two Bancroft Building, 3411 Silver Side Road, Wilmington, Delaware, 19810, a firm certified accountant, to replace the elected auditors in accordance with section 917 of the second class township code, three, uh, P S, uh, 10917.
I second that motion.
Any comments or questions?
Uh, no.
All those in favor? Aye.
I make a motion to adopt resolution twenty four dash two zero two zero, adopt and revise West Vinson fee schedule for two zero two one in the form submitted to the West Vinson Township Board of Supervisors at the reorganization meeting, consisting of seven pages, including section four, residential new construction, commercial new construction, general permits, fire code official fees, board of appeals fees, board of supervisor fees, township, miscellaneous fees, subdivision and land development fees, engineering and legal fees, land planner, traffic engineer fees, water ordinance management fees with an electrical fee schedule. Totally incident.
Mr. Chairman? Uh, the caption here is not correct. It should be a motion to adopt resolution six, 2021. Motion twenty four, 2020 was a motion that the board passed in December. This motion amends that, um, motion only to the extent that it puts in place the engineering fees that LTO will be charging, uh, for their work product. All the other fees that the board adopted in December will remain the same.
So the, it should just be the four dash 2021 and the rest, everything else is okay?
Yeah, why would it be five?
It's just.
It would be five twenty.
It should be six. You adopted five earlier in the meeting. This is resolution six, 2021.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Um, I'm still gonna second it.
Where did we adopt five? Where's five?
In the beginning, on the first page.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I'm sorry, on the second page, item number, uh.
The sustainability committee.
Oh, yeah, I see it. Okay, okay.
I wanna say, remove the item up if you had to establish the sizing committee before you appointed members and.
Got you.
The numbers didn't get re-numbered.
So, seconding the revised motion.
Okay, any comments or questions from the audience?
Uh, Julie Foster wants to know, can these fees be shown on the screen?
Do you have them there? They're about, they're your six pages worth, but that you can. I mean, are they on the website? Let me ask you that.
They, they're on the website. Um, the, all the resolutions, um, are listed on the website under the, uh, the board's, um, the board meetings for tonight, yeah.
And the only changes, Julie, are in the engineering fees, um, aren't, it is gonna cost us less to have our new engineering firm. So it's reducing fees that would be reimbursable to residents, by residents, anyway. It, it's a good thing, but the only ones that are changed are, uh, we, we adopted the whole list last month.
She said that was the question, a comparison of the new and old fees. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions?
Um, it says two. Hang on one second. Oh, no, that's hers. Nope, I don't see any hands raised or any other questions.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, um.
There's no.
Don't we end this meeting before we start the general meeting?
Yes.
We should, we should adjourn this one.
I could make a motion to adjourn if there is no other business of the reorganization meeting. Okay, that's my motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'd like to go into.
Bernie Dent.
I'm sorry?
Bernadette said it would go quickly. She was right.
I'm not gonna watch.
How'd she know that?
She's done this before.
Okay, I'd like to call to order our regular meeting. And let's see, uh, the first thing on the agenda, oh, well, announced that we had an executive session on December 30th at 7:00 PM to discuss personnel. And the first thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
I move to approve the minutes from December 21st, uh, 2020.
I second that.
Any, any comments or questions from the audience?
No, I don't see anything.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next is the announcement of a special meeting of the advisory committee.
Chairman, because there's such a large number of new appointees, uh, to the committees, um, we thought it'd be good to have an orientation meeting of all the new committee members, uh, and invite the existing members if they choose to attend. Uh, the meeting would be held on next Monday at 7:00 PM. Uh, it'd be like a, like a workshop of just the committees. Uh, well, it's a brief agenda and that's about it.
Excellent.
Just to bring in how the business goes.
Okay, our next announcement is, uh, the scheduling of the auditor reorganization meeting for Tuesday, January 5th, 2021.
Yes, the, the elected auditors will reorganize, uh, tomorrow at the, the meeting, is it? What time's the meeting, Kathy? Seven o'clock?
Yeah, no, 7:30.
7:30.
Okay. Um, we have nothing under new business and so we're open for public comment.
I don't see anything.
Okay, then we could get one more motion.
Oh, wait, hang on, a hand just went up.
Okay.
Dan MacArthur, let me unmute him.
Okay.
Okay, I'm trying to unmute him. Says he's self-muted.
Can he, does that mean he can still hear us, can he?
Yeah, but his hand's up to speak, so.
He would need to unmute himself.
Yeah.
Can you see him? Does he hear you?
He's connected to audio, so he can hear.
Okay.
Can you text Michelle on mute?
Yeah, that's what I'm gonna do.
Well, while she's working on that, I just wanted to say I'm really excited about the committees for this coming year. We've got a a lot of good positive energy. There are 10 people who have never served on a West Vinson committee previously. And there are few people coming back from previous roles to new roles, but I think it's gonna be an exciting year in our advisory committees. Lots of new energy and new ideas.
It's always good to get new people.
Yep.
Kathy?
Yeah.
Can you try to unmute Dan MacArthur?
Uh, let's see, da, 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 da. I have tried.
You should be able to unmute yourself, um, with the, the.
Yeah.
If you hit, it says the right, top right of his board. Um, if he hits the, uh, microphone, he clicks on that, it should turn green and he should be able to speak.
Right.
Well, we got his.
No, he's not, he's not texting me. He's not unmuted.
We get his email when he logged on.
I'm sorry?
Did we capture his email when he logged on? If so, we could write to him and ask him to send his question to us and we'll answer it at the next meeting.
Okay.
That works. Okay, that was a public comment, correct? Anybody else out there?
Uh, I don't see anybody else. Greg Smith wants to know who is attending the meeting right now.
Who asked the question?
Greg Smith?
Okay.
Greg Smith, yes. It looks like.
We can only name ourselves, 'cause we don't know anybody else.
I don't know who's gonna answer that.
Well, we could say the three supervisors, the town manager, our secretary and our treasurer, but beyond.
Yeah, there are 16 attendees right now.
Okay. Yeah, I don't know about naming them. What do you think, Bernadette?
Yeah, I'm wondering, um, Kathy, are you able to see? 'Cause we can't see who, we could just see 23, which I think includes us, the 16 plus the seven. I'm, can you see who those attendees are? We can only see ourselves.
We can.
Okay.
But should we, but should we announce the names of the people that are in attendance? I would think not. That's, I feel.
It's, it's, I, I would think if they voluntarily want to name who they are, they certainly can, but, um, I'm not sure that we're, it's, it's a little difficult, we're doing this virtually, to name everybody who's on there, 'cause some people don't register, you know, the email's not your name sometimes. So it's a little difficult to say who everyone is, 'cause it could say goofy123 and we, we don't know who that is.
Yeah, same thing with Greg Smith. Yeah, same thing with Greg Smith.
Well, I mean, he's asking us to name the attendees on this meeting. I don't know if that's something we should do publicly. The names of people, or is that okay? We don't do that in a public meeting.
Yeah, Mike.
Yeah, we don't normally do that in a public.
In a public meeting, we only ask those people who are going to speak to give us their name.
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, I have another question now.
I would say no then, I mean, I agree with my opinion.
Another question, Michelle?
Okay, the other question was Dan's question. He said, his question was to the fields at the township park being closed. Most area parks and fields are open, and while the walking path is open, the fields to allow individual residents and their children to play is still closed. Is there a reason at this point they would be closed?
I don't see a particular reason, but what do you guys think?
I would say.
What happened was it was established that this was part of the governor's mandate, and so we were following the rules of the state.
But she's saying other parks are open, so they're either not following the mandate or the mandate has changed.
That case.
Municipality decision.
Well, Bernie's saying it's a state mandate.
Yes, that's what we're following, is recommendations from the state and county.
Exactly, recommendations, yes.
But those municipalities that choose not to follow those recommendations, that's up to them. We're choosing to follow.
Yeah, so it's not a mandate, it's a recommendation, I guess.
Okay.
It could have changed with the new rules that were effective today, which I have not yet read.
Yeah, I don't really see any reason that you, that we can't have all our parks open because they're outside for whoever chooses to go to the park.
The issue about the playing fields, Mike, had to do about team sports and too many kids, too many parents in one spot at one time. And we got that advice from the county way back in the summer.
Right, right.
So, it's definitely that team sports are what, the reason the fields are closed. So, I think if Dan and his kids are playing in the park with a soccer ball, that's very.
I can't imagine anybody saying anything.
He's saying, he said, I don't believe that pertains any longer. For example, Walnut Lane is open.
Walnut Lane is not in West Vinson.
And is Walnut Lane open for team sports?
Then he says, while the playground equipment might fall under the exclusion, the fields don't seem relevant for individuals.
And that's what I'm saying, if he and his kids.
Does that make sense, right?
That's, that's different than the fields are closed for teams and large groups. Our basketball court is supposed to be closed, and there was about a dozen kids out there playing the other day.
Yeah, I mean, I don't, go ahead.
He says, the sign says closed.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
So, it's still.
Make your own decision.
John.
I don't think anybody's policing an individual or a few people walking on a field, but I could be wrong.
Can that be removed to open the fields, wants to know?
We could definitely discuss that.
The signs?
I think we'd have to modify the signs to be more specific, and then we're putting so much content on there, nobody will read it anyways.
Right.
Okay. Dan. And Jamie Bicker has his hand up.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, a few questions. On the list of all the appointments that were just approved, were the auditors on that list? Did I?
No, because you're elected officials.
Well, we were approved last year.
Oh, you're elected, yeah.
And we elected, we took you off this year because we did not need to appoint you.
Okay, so we're both elected and appointed.
You don't need to be appointed because you're elected.
Well, then why were we both elected and appointed last year?
Because it was a mistake.
Because we didn't do that. Last year, Yvonne wasn't on the list, and somebody said to me, because she's elected. And I said, but the auditors were. So, we had a discrepancy, and we fixed it by taking off those appointed officials, tax collector, auditor.
Okay, thanks. I was going to kick out of the fact that you guys approved the mileage rate, and the auditors meet the next day by statute, and our only job is to approve the mileage rate.
Let's hope we agree.
Well, we didn't last year, we didn't last year because the rate that was approved by the supervisors had to be corrected the next day. But you got it right this time, 56 cents is right. I'm just curious, why did we switch to go to meeting? Because I find it extremely confusing, and I do miss being able to see who else is at the meeting. Not that it's required, just I think everybody likes to see who all's here.
Well, I'm all for changing to something where we can see everybody.
John, was the reason primarily for security?
Primarily for security. We had a incident early last year that was less than good, and we felt that the webinar was a better security venue. You know, I think we're still trying to figure out the best method to handle this. And we're open to suggestions from the board and the public.
I think we'll probably get used to it. I just, I guess though, and I've only used go-to-meeting a handful of times, but I'm guessing that someone who runs it has the option to allow all the participants to be seen.
This is Kathy here. That would be allowed in the go-to meeting. The go-to webinar is different, it's a different format.
Okay, but the go-to meeting, is that secure or unsecure?
It's unsecure, same as Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. It's meeting versus webinar.
Gotcha.
Well, regardless, I don't know, I have no idea. It just seemed, would seem really odd that they don't give the option to allow all attendees to be shown.
Well, thanks Jamie. I feel like we're keep, we're a work in progress on these social media meetings, and we're going to keep going and try to improve. And so, as I said in a message to Brian Curry today, please keep comments coming in, and we will see what we can do to make the system work better. Because we're probably going to be doing this all through the summer, so.
Stop, we're probably back in the, back in the meeting room by May.
Chairman, Mike.
Okay.
COVID's got to end at some point.
So, I have a question maybe for Bernadette or John. When does this census, new census tally come into effect in the municipality? Things will happen now that we're over 5,000 residents.
I believe these census numbers will be issued later this year, and I believe it is effective January 1st, 2022. But I could be corrected on that.
We don't have until next year.
I believe that's the case, it takes a while to get the numbers out. And you have, there's, I believe, a challenge period that municipalities have to have the opportunity to challenge the census data. And then when that period is closed, then it's approved. And I think the changes are effective, generally effective on January 1st of some date, probably '22.
Thank you very much.
So, Dan MacArthur wants clarification that the residents are allowed to use the park. He wants clarification, he wants to know, is playing on the fields by the residents, okay then?
Well, I think we have signs on there saying that it's closed, correct?
Right, but then he mentioned taking down the signs.
And we, we're not going to do that now.
So, it's still closed.
So, the answer to him would be no then?
Right. But again, I don't think there's anybody arresting people for walking on the field.
It's not being police, how's that?
Not being police, there you go.
All right, let me see if that surprises.
Well, he heard it, right? You don't need to type it back to him.
Well, I want to be sure that that's all he has to say.
That's his responsibility, Michelle.
Well, because people take time typing, and then the questions come in after you've moved on. I just didn't want that to happen, that's all.
Not like the texting where you see the little bubbles.
Correct, it's different.
Okay, good. Keep training.
But he hasn't answered me now, so.
Okay, anybody else, anybody else have questions?
I don't see anything else.
Okay, I'm looking for motion.
Bernie's ready.
He already did it.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, happy 2021.
Thanks. And I'm not going to forgive you guys for what happened in the beginning.
It didn't last here either.
That's twice, that's twice.
Do we get like a bouquet of flowers or something?
Yeah, you should.
Next year, we won't do it.
Thank God, I won't be there, you're right.
But if you change your mind, we'll let you be the member.
Yeah, no. I'll pass. All right, guys, thanks.
Thank you.
Good to have you with us, Bernadette.
Thank you, happy 2021. I'm hoping for that May, we can come back.
April would even be better, tomorrow would be best.
That is so optimistic, I was happy to hear it.
All right, see you guys.
Thank you. Thank you Kathy, thank you Michelle.
You're welcome.
Come on.
Here we go. Okay. Shut that. Exit, okay, it's in the file, up in the file. Leave webinar, end webinar.
All right.
You see it?
Yeah, bye-bye.
See ya.